Working extremely hard. They gave a great presentation to the Board of County Commissioners on yesterday in our briefing. I'd like to invite, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, Director Holloway and Ms. Shawnee, Ms. Shawnee Coleman. They're both going to come up and just share some thoughts as our county manager and members of the commission as we work tirelessly to figure out how do we work with the state of Nevada to gradually open back Clark County and get back to business, to show our business community that we do understand, that in light of everything that's going on, everyone's essential, and we want everyone to win at the end of the day. And so through the manager, to you ladies, I want to open up to you to give a presentation on where we are at this point and how we're working with the state and the governor to gradually reopen Clark County.
Yes. Japone Holloway, Director of Business License.
Shawnee Coleman, Director of Community and Economic Development.
So ladies, you gotta really eat the microphone because I can't hear you with that mask.
Yes. Yes, Ms. Coleman and I have been working together. We have formed a united front, and you made a comment about being our best and trying to do our best. So it's important for us in both of our departments to do our best and really be able to serve the business community. We know all the things that they've gone through and what they've experienced. So we are working to develop an informational guide checklist for the businesses that they'll be able to utilize. And it's going to be very important that we have the checklist aligned with the governor's directives and his orders, because as he phase in certain business openings, then we will be in tandem with those business openings to be able to support the businesses. In addition to that, we're going to provide a dedicated technical support phone line for businesses to call in. We will be available to speak with them about how they can phase in their business operations. We are definitely aware that a business may not be able to open up fully when they start off, and we want to be there and be supportive as they do a quick start, if you will, to be able to get the businesses open, start to rehire some of their employees, and we are definitely going to work with them to make sure that that happens appropriately. Ms. Coleman, now, if you have anything to add?
Yes. In addition to that, we want the business community to understand that we're going to have a new normal. And with that, we are going to be flexible with them in understanding what that new normal is and understanding what their business needs are. In addition, as the governor's directive either expires or he gives further direction, we are suspecting that there's going to be a change in a need for public safety, and so we want to help our business community understand what that means. And so that could be helping them from a technical aspect of understanding maybe where they put hand sanitation, or if they have a business that forms lines, helping them understand that they should put demarcations on the floor. So really, a level of technical support. We are going to look and see if there's an opportunity, working with the governor's office for the governor's office of economic development, if there are financial support for some of our small businesses, and just looking at ways that we can help them and our community with social confidence. That's going to be something that's very important as we start to move into the new normal. We want our constituents who frequent these businesses to know that it's safe and that we've helped these businesses understand public safety so they feel comfortable going out into the public and patronizing these businesses again.
And just to add, I think it's very important for the reopening process is that it's streamlined and efficient. So we don't want to put any administrative burdens on the businesses as they are reopening. And as Ms. Coleman has stated, we definitely want to work with them and support them in any way that we can. So we will be available to answer any of their questions, to be creative and innovative in terms of how they start their operations.
Okay. Commissioner Weekly, did you want to follow up? I think this is a topic that every, all the commissioners will want to have some dialogue about.
Yeah, I'm following your lead, Madam Chair, because I have one more after they're done.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate the great work that you're doing. Obviously, the business sector is really concerned about how it is going to proceed, what the world is going to look like. We're doing, or you mentioned that you're putting together a checklist, and I think one of the things you ought to add, or maybe you have on that checklist, is just a box. We don't need to see the plan. But I think we ought to put on there something that says that they have a protocol established for social distancing. Industry leaders and associations that represent segments of our industries in this valley, I'm sure, are communicating with you, and will need to make sure that they've given guidance so that we have, at a bare minimum, what we have been asked to do by the governor and what makes sense as we listen to and talk with the healthcare providers. The resort industry has some unique challenges because by definition, there are certain things they must offer, right, inside a resort hotel? And they've reached out to us, and they're probably talking to you, about some relief that they could be given, because maybe they can't open all the restaurants, maybe they don't have enough seats at bars and so forth. But they need to be open, and gradually probably means that all of that has got to be in consideration, and we've got to work on that over the course of time. And then finally, we're learning about some things that work for us and for business that are a little different, and in some respects, it might seem as though we have relaxed some of the more stringent requirements that we have in place. I think this is a good time for us to take a step back and determine whether or not, which of all of those we might remove permanently, because there may well be things that we require that we don't need any longer. And I hope that we're looking at that so that we can make sure that when we're finished, we provide an opportunity where business can operate as lean and mean as possible, and we can provide assistance and support to them in addition to regulating them in the ways that are really required and that make a lot of sense in order to protect the public. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Gibson. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to thank both of you for your efforts over the last month. I know, Ms. Holloway, you were in a position, like everyone else in the county, to have to pivot immediately to meet the needs, the immediate needs of the business owners as they were dealing with the effects of the COVID-19 outbreak and the governor's direction. So thank you so much for working with the business community to try and figure out how to get things turned around as quick as possible. And Ms. Coleman, I know you have been looking two steps ahead to look at what it looks like after we emerge from these difficult times. And so I appreciate your collaboration and your work with the members of the business community from LVGA, from the chambers, to really understand what's going on on the ground and make sure that we are nimble, I think that's a word that you used, Ms. Holloway, being nimble, as we emerge from these difficult times, and just making sure that we at Clark County are ready to go to assist our businesses as soon as the governor and the health district tell us that it's safe to do so.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? I just want to add, so being that we're giving you some direction of some further places to go and look to add to the already amazing work that you're doing, you know, we need you to look at the codes to see if we can be more flexible. So I know currently, like on gaming, it says you have to have all these other things, and I think that we have to look at a reasonable timeframe for folks to get back on track. And so two months won't do them any good, but we have to figure out what that long-term is so that they can get going. I do think that we need to ensure that everybody understands today, you're still in business, you just received a temporary closure, and we want you to unlock the door, turn on the lights, and get going, but with in mind of public health, your employees, how do we ensure what that looks like working with the health district and the state? But if there are any codes, I want to make sure that we allow people to reinvent themselves, because as we've seen through all of this, I would have never thought I would have seen curbside liquor or liquor delivery in my lifetime, but it was a way of reinventing themselves. So I want to make sure that businesses feel comfortable enough in Clark County that we're going to be flexible, we're going to be fluid, but at some point, we're going to ask you to either get a different type of license or reabout your license. So I'd like to see things like that, and maybe some webinars so that we can start talking through this for everybody to understand, just to begin with. Anybody else want to add anything? I'm just trying to give you some direction so that you can, I don't think that too much information is a bad thing these days.
Madam Chair, if I could just add, and I concur with the statements that everybody just made. I just want to make crystal clear for the public that's watching, for the media, this here is the body that has jurisdiction over the Las Vegas Strip. 2.3 million residents live in our regional community, but a million in unincorporated Clark County, and this body is in full support of the governor's directives. We are looking to follow those directives, and at which time, like the chair said, that the medical community gives the governor direction, that's when we will be in a position to fully get ready to go up and running, help our businesses at that point.
Good points. Commissioner Weekly?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I want to thank Director Coleman. Thank you, Director Holloway, and hopefully, with the chair's permission, at our next BCC, we can maybe give a more clear update on what's happening from a liquor and gaming standpoint. You know, where are we at this point? I'm sure through the chair's leadership and the governor's directive, we'll have a more clear understanding as we gradually start opening up things and be able to answer more questions for those who are calling us, you know, on a regular basis, just asking, what do we do, and, you know, how do we get through this process? But thank you both very much, and it looked like you survived 4/20.
Yes.
Okay? All right. With that...
It's not today.
Right, yeah. It was a big day yesterday, and there was a lot of, I don't want to get...
Commissioner, I thought it would have reminded us all.
Yeah.
Yes, we both survived 4/20 yesterday.
Yeah, guys survived 4/20. And with that, I did ask the chair, Madam Chair, if it's okay, Commissioner Brown, I want to ask you, do you have anything for the ladies? I know you asked some really good questions in our briefing. Was there anything you wanted to ask them before they take their seats?
No, just to echo the comments and thank them for the work they've done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. And Madam Chair, thank you for your permission to allow, I mean, thank you, ladies, to show, I have a video clip, and Skip, are we ready to show that? I have a video clip I want to show you all. Madam Manager, this is from NACO, and I just want to say that I'm grateful to have had an opportunity to serve on NACO as I'm a former president of the board, and our chairlady here, she is the vice president, will be the incoming president in '21, and NACO is going to be well represented again by Clark County. And Clark County has just done some fantastic work with supporting Nevada Association of County Officials under our executive director, Dagny Stapleton, if you will. But this is a little clip that we want to show, we're showing across the state, to show how important the county is. Counties matter all across this country, and as we all continue to fight for, whether it be CAREs, ACT dollars, or whatever the funding that's out there, we need to help rebuild our communities, this is what it's all about. And so I believe the video has started. There's audio that goes with that. There is audio that goes with that. Okay, can you stop this, please? And maybe we'll come back at a later date when we can get it right, but I don't want to take away from this video.
Today is not a technology-friendly day.
No, it's not. Skip, you can stop it, please. Marcy. It's a very good educational video. I think it's important to show and give credit to the counties. We have a lot of folks with boots on the ground, making things happen, and I just want to make sure that it's done right. And then lastly, please don't forget, join us today at the chairwoman's conference, at her press conference. We're going to have Mason Van Howling, and I will be here to talk about testing, UMC, as well as bed availability, and other things that's going on from the medical community today at the chairwoman's press conference at 1:30. Stay tuned. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Weekly, Commissioner Gibson, do you have anything? Commissioner Sagerblum, under emerging issues.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, having been sitting at home for two weeks, I have lots of things came to mind, so I'll try to summarize them pretty quickly. But first, going back to the issue I raised about the stimulus money, I would hope we could have some type of a discussion and maybe a presentation by staff of how they interpret that. I know the language from the federal law is pretty vague as far as what it can be used on, but I would like to have at least how our staff views that. I know we have 60,000 culinary workers out of work who are looking for food and things. There's 200,000 high school kids, or just kids in general, out of school that could use Chromebooks. There's summer programs where we could hopefully, if we can get back to social distancing, have our community resource centers hire people to help with kids, because I know the families would love to have their kids out of the house for a little bit. There's also something going on around the country where local governments are creating teams for contact tracing, so that if somebody comes up identified with the virus, there are teams with the government that will actually go follow those, figure out whoever they saw, and do those kind of things, which I think would be a great thing that the county could, a resource we could offer. And then finally, I want to point out that one of the other things that hasn't come up yet is the Federal Reserve has offered to issue short-term bonds. We're not clear exactly how that would work. I talked to Guy Hobbs with Hobbs &amp; Ong, and he said that might be a good backup, like a line of credit for us, and I wondered if the county could reach out to Hobbs &amp; Ong as our bond advisors, and ask them to make a presentation of how we could access that money, or at least be prepared to access that money in the event that things just really fell off a cliff sometime.
Yep. So Commissioner Sagerblum, I'm going to tell you where we are on a couple of your issues. So I was at a meeting very early this morning with Mason and the health district to talk directly about the investigators, which Commissioner Jones brought to my attention this weekend. So we had already been trying to work, so I think that you will see some of that discussion coming about. I do know that Kevin is having a phone conversation with the culinary today because they are one of the hardest hit, and many of them cannot get through the unemployment line, which a lot of people are experiencing. So we, at the county, social service is going to be 100% more than our usual amount, and so we have to be flexible and available to do some of those things. So no one anticipated 300,000 people would be unemployed today. So we will have plenty of conversations as a board, because social service does not discriminate at this point, as Commissioner Weekly said. People that never thought they would use a food bank are now using a food bank, and so we have to, I wish it was more money, because it really won't even hit the service, and it's important that we work in collaboration with everybody else to serve the constituents. To give you an idea, so Clark County School District is averaging close to 200,000 meals a week, that they're just providing breakfast and lunch. Our Delivering with Dignity, which is a countywide project, is doing 15,000 up to date, which is a little over three weeks. So we're trying to help, but there's a point, a breaking point for many families. Now it's about having gas to get to that food bank, quite frankly. Now it's about having that mask to go back to work. So all of those things will, we will have real discussions on all of that, so I promise. I mean, but it's changing every day, and so through the MAC, we're hearing of different things and navigating, so we'll continue. I feel like you guys are the most brief out of all the electeds. I did scold the MAC not sharing information with their electeds. So that's going to change, because we're going to send out the information for them. So we'll continue. I hear what you're seeing, and you and I, in particular, went through the legislature when the hardest cuts were there, and government was needed more than ever during bad times. So we will make sure that we get a real presentation and some expectations that we want to see from everybody. Secondly, I wanted to say, under my emerging issues, there's a lot of amazing people in our community that are giving donations, whether it's food to our first responders, whether it's masks, whether it's using their parking lot. So I am sending out a letter on behalf of the Clark County Commission to say thank you. So if you have other people that have done that, donated something within your district, at some point, when we get kind of stabilized and back on track, I think that we should bring folks in and recognize them as a whole, because the difference between our community and so many other communities across the country is we come together in a great way when times are tough, and nobody even stops to take credit, no one asks for anything. But I think that we need to recognize in many of these small businesses that have done the smallest thing, that's made a huge difference for folks going forward. So we're working on that. So I hope that you can all come to the press conference today, because I think it's going to be an exciting time to talk about and reiterate what we said today on business licensing. Please, let's have all of our ducks in a row for when we are ready, and given the opportunity to reopen based on the medical component. And then two, testing is going to be key, and I think that today you'll see that we, as we always do, come back with a vengeance and do it big, because I think that's what's important, too, going forward. So with that, I think that concludes all of our emerging issues. Okay. Ms. King?
Commissioners, it is now past 10:00 a.m. We will need to move to Section 4 of your agenda, which are your public hearing items. Madam Chair, I would request that we wait at least a minute for public comment, or to see if public comment comes through the email system for each item. Item number 53 is pursuant to NRS 288.153, conduct a public hearing in accordance with Clark County Code 3.74.030, Section 12, to ratify the University Medical Center of Southern Nevada's governing board's approval of the fiscal year 2020 salary plan cost of living effective July 1 of 2019, to the current collective bargaining agreement between UMC and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 501, also sitting as the Board of County, excuse me, Hospital Trustees.
Mason, did you want to speak, or shall I just open the public comment?
Sure. I'll wait for open public comments, fine, and I'll give a little context to this.
So we'll see if anybody wants to chime in on the public comment. See and none? Mason? I'm getting all the head shakes. So Mason, you want to go ahead and dialisten?
Good afternoon, or good morning, Commissioners. Mason Van Howling, Chief Executive Officer of University Medical Center, for the record. Agenda item number 53 is our cost of living adjustment for operating engineers at the hospital. We've got amazing engineers, just slightly over 40 engineers, that always keep the lights going, keep the facility in tip-top shape, and never have stopped working through this crisis. So this is one of the business items that we've been working on with our engineers, the 501 engineers. This is our cost of living increase at 2.5%. It's about a $77,000 impact to the organization. We settled on in February, but it is retroactive to July 1 of 2019. But very encouraged that we've got a great relationship with the 501, and just want to get this passed, and so we can adjust our cost of living, especially during this time.
Thank you, Mason. So do I need to, Leslie, do we have any comments?
Madam Chair, no, we don't.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing, I'll close the public hearing, and then I'd entertain a motion. Commissioner Weekly, this is UMC, you?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mason, thank you very much. I want to thank you and your team for working with 501. We had some long, drawn-out meetings, but this is, to me, again, is a result of when cool heads come to a table and sit and talk, and be able to agree to respectfully disagree. We're able to reach a consensus like this, and so I appreciate your leadership. Thank you very much for working with these guys. This means a lot to them, and I believe that they are in a better place now, so thank you very much. I appreciate that. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval, please.
Okay. Commissioner Weekly has made a motion for approval to follow staff's recommendation. Any further discussion? See and none? Please cast your vote.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your support, and our engineers appreciate your support, so thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all they're doing.
Next, we have item number 54, which is to conduct a public hearing and approve, adopt, and authorize the chair to sign a resolution approving a public finance authority tax exempt 501(c)(3) refunding revenue bond issued in the amount not to exceed $25 million in order to refinance the Clark County, Nevada, variable rate demand economic development refunding revenue bonds for Bishop Gorman High School Project Series 2011 for the financing and/or refinancing of educational facilities for use by Bishop Gorman High School.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and wait one minute. Minutes, days, they all seem to run together.
Madam Chair, we've received no public comment.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment, and I will turn it over to Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've spoken with the president of Bishop Gorman. Bishop Gorman lies in my commission district and would appreciate the commission's support for this ordinance, and would move for approval, agenda item 54.
Okay. Commissioner Jones has moved for approval on item 54. Any further discussion? See and none? Please cast your vote.
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Next, we have item number 55, which is to conduct a public hearing and approve, adopt, and authorize the chair to sign a resolution approving a public finance authority tax exempt 501(c)(3) revenue bond issued in the amount not to exceed $21 million in order to finance and/or refinance the acquisition, construction, improvement, equipping, and furnishing of a charter school educational facilities for use by Founders Academy of Las Vegas.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe earlier that we had some public comments, but let's wait a couple, half a minute, see if we have any additional public comment. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment, and I'm going to make a motion, because this is in my district, to approve item 55.
Aye.
And that motion passes. Thank you.
Next, we have item number 56, which is to conduct a public hearing to approve, adopt, and authorize the chair to sign an ordinance amending sections of Chapter 2.38 of the Clark County Code, setting forth the rights of county officers and employees who disclose improper governmental action and providing for other matters properly relating thereto, or take other action as appropriate.
Okay, item 56 is a public comment. I'm going to go ahead and open that up. Seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment, and I'd entertain a motion. This really is just us complying with AB 274, the last legislature.
That's correct, Madam Chair. The Bill 274 of the 2019 legislative session updated and clarified provisions of state law that provide these protections. law that provide these protections. I move approval.
Okay, Commissioner Gibson has moved for approval of Item 56. Any further discussion? See and none, please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
Next, we have Item Number 57, which is to adopt an ordinance by emergency amending Chapter 3.04 of the Clark County Code, authorizing the enforcement of emergency directives, orders, and regulations enacted during the declared state of emergency, providing for immediate effectiveness, and for other provisions related thereto.
Okay, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Ms. Miller for putting together this ordinance. There were many situations that have come to many of our attention of folks who in the community were not complying with the emergency directives of either the governor or the county manager, and this simply provides additional remedies for us in terms of enforcement. We have reviewed the letter from the Realtors and certainly understand the concerns when it comes to landlord-tenant situations. And certainly, we will only use as much force or use those remedies as are necessary within Clark County as a result of this ordinance. I would move for approval, Agenda Item 57.
Okay, Commissioner Jones has moved for approval of Item 57. Any comments, Commissioner Gibson?
No, I'm sorry, I did not.
Anybody else have any comments? And what I would say is there's a lot of great actors out there, but there's also some bad actors, and these are really who we have to protect people from. So with that, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones. See no further discussion, please cast your vote. And that motion passes.
All right, Commissioners, we can move back to the business section of your agenda. Item Number 59 is to receive a report regarding the Clark County Fiscal Year 2021 general fund budget and direct staff accordingly. Ms. Colvin is here to provide a presentation for the board.
Okay, perfect.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Jessica Colvin. Before I get started with the presentation today... Make sure it comes up. Thank you. Before we get started with the presentation today, I wanted to let you know that the general fund budget and a presentation was prepared prior to March 18. That was prior to the closure of the nonessential businesses. And since then, over the last 30 days, all hands have been on deck in really gaining an understanding of the economic impact to the county. It's taken a lot of work to turn what we had originally prepared around for our presentation to you today. And I wanted to take a moment to thank our finance staff, specifically Jeff Share, our Budget Director, and the financial analysts who have spent day and night working on the budget and the presentation. It was extraordinary that they were able to file it on time. In addition to that, our department heads have been very patient with us and collaborative in helping prepare what we have for you today. And lastly, at a moment's notice, our partners in the District Attorney's Office, our financial advisors, Guy Hobbs and Kathy Ong, as well as Jeremy Aguero and Applied Analysis, and our governmental affairs team and NACO have been available day and night at a moment's notice to assist us through this process. And so with that, I'd like to start the presentation. Looking at the first slide on Slide 2, what we wanted to really start the day with is that originally on March 20, we were asked to provide an estimate of the economic impact to Clark County from the COVID-19 pandemic. And that evening, we provided a $1.1 billion economic impact, and this is the breakdown of that for you. Keep in mind that this was a 16-month fiscal impact from the remainder of fiscal year 2020 and for the full year of fiscal year 2021. $342.9 million of that impact was estimated to affect the general fund. The remaining were non-general funds, and I'll take a moment to go through each of those line items. If you look at the first, emergency response and human health and welfare, you'll see that we've identified those as non-general fund economic impacts. And those were estimates that were provided from our Fire Chief and Director of Social Service and Family Services. These estimates are changing, they're continuing to change, and we're working on revised estimates for you. I can tell you that at that time, we had not contemplated standing up a med search facility with up to 900 beds or a shelter. You know, we hadn't contemplated that our shelter services would close down temporarily and we would need to have an alternative. So we'll be able to provide a better estimate of those numbers for you in the coming weeks. We also, in that 30-day period, we were estimating two pay periods where we needed to send employees home and provide additional paid leave outside the current contracts that are in place. And we've estimated those costs for you between the general fund and non-general fund. Looking at the losses, the primary losses that we are facing is losses in consolidated tax revenue, room tax revenue, gaming license fees, obviously our sales tax, which many of our officers are funded out of. Those impact the general fund as well as the non-general fund. And lastly, our two major enterprise funds that we have, our hospital, UMC, is experiencing significant revenue losses as well as increased costs, and our Department of Aviation as well, which those are non-general funds, but are been, were included in that $1.1 billion impact. So as we move forward, today's presentation is to provide you with an overview of the general fund. Again, these numbers will not tie to our presentation that we'll be presenting because this is, again, a 16-month impact, and these numbers have changed since those original estimates on March 20. And I think, Madam Chair, if we have questions throughout the presentation, it's fine to ask as we go through.
Okay.
To begin with, we wanted to start with our current year impact from fiscal year 2020 and the impact of COVID-19. This table is to show you the impact from March 2020 through June 2020, the remainder of fiscal year 20. The primary revenue sources that we're seeing an impact are consolidated tax revenue. And what we're showing you here is in fiscal year 19, what we actually earned in these in revenue compared to what we're estimating in fiscal year 2020. These revenue estimates, we've been working on them for a number of weeks now with the assistance of Guy Hobbs and Jeremy Aguero and his team at Applied Analysis to gain an understanding, and they have changed slightly going forward, so our final numbers will reflect those estimates. Consolidated tax revenue, room tax, and gaming license fees, as well as business license fees, are all expected to decrease, obviously primarily due to the closure of the nonessential businesses. As well as, our governmental services have significantly been reduced due to the closure of nonessential services, and so we're also estimating a reduction in charges for services. Overall, we're estimating a $118 million reduction in revenues when you look at the same period in fiscal year 19. Now traditionally, when we were presenting, planning to present this budget, we would have expected to exceed fiscal year 19 significantly, and now we are expecting a reduction by half.
So Commissioner Segalblum, is this what you were looking for when you asked earlier? About, because didn't, you asked what our, what our loss of revenue was?
No, I'm more curious about the $300 million and how we're going to spend that. I mean, this part I understand, and I can see the whole, but my question is, and I'm not asking for an answer, it was more as how mechanically we're going to look at that $300 million, the stimulus money, and analyze where we would use it, what type of criteria we would use, and who would make those decisions.
Okay. Go ahead, Jessica.
Going forward, the next couple of slides will be in regards to the fiscal year 2021 impact from COVID-19. And to give you a couple of snapshots of those most impacted revenues, this bar chart on Slide 6 is to reflect the room tax, gaming licenses, and other licenses and permits, and it's a history from 2007 through what we're estimating for 2021. And you can see that it was a fairly stable revenue source in the general fund from year to year. We were seeing some significant increases beginning in fiscal year 2017. Wanted to show to you, if you look from the third bar to the right, this, our 2020 estimated revenues are expected to significantly decline. We would have originally estimated prior, pre-COVID, we would have estimated that that FY 2020 revenues would have exceeded FY 2019. And our last two bar charts is to, like I said, the budget was prepared and ready to present to you, and so we had already estimated FY 2021 revenues at that point. And so the second to last bar chart is the pre-COVID-19 revenues. And you can see we were estimating these fees to increase to $270 million. And we're now expecting them to decline by, to $199 million due to the pandemic impact.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Gibson.
Yes, Ms. Colvin. So the third bar from the right, the 2020 estimate, if you added $118 million to that number, is that what we imagined? Is that what we were planning to have come in during the fiscal, the fiscal year 2020?
$118 million.
So the $118 million is the loss in revenue that we've had March 20 through June 20?
This is only for room tax, gaming license, and other license fees. So the $118 is a combination of consolidated tax, room tax. So if you took the room tax, gaming license, and business license, you would add those, and we would add that. That's only to get to fiscal year 19, not necessarily what we would get to 2020.
Right, okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
And just to describe the bar chart, we wanted to show that the light blue are other licenses and permits, so that's going to business license renewals, franchise fees. The dark blue are room tax fees, and the orange is gaming licenses. Something important to note is the room tax, you can see how that was starting to increase year, in the, over the last few years as a component of this revenue source, and now it has significantly decreased in fiscal year 2021 post-COVID-19.
So I, for me, Jessica, it's just interesting because it just seems 2007, we still were higher than what we're projecting, so that means, at least in my mind, I'm thinking we got to look back to the early 2000s to even see what those room rates might have been, or what gaming, I mean, we've opened a lot of properties just in those years. So it's, I just think that for the general public, they should understand, this is like going back more than a decade.
Yes, and we will go back and do that exercise and look how far back we would need to go to see that with fees at this level.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. We've got some properties, large properties, that are supposed to come on board in the next year or two. Does this contemplate that those don't open, or that they, that there are no, no taxes that are derived from those properties? I guess I'm trying to understand sort of the, I know, we know that there are properties right now that are not going to be reopening anytime soon. Is it offset at all by those properties that are supposed to be coming online in the next year or so?
I'll need to get additional information on the details of the additional properties. Fiscal year 2021, I don't know that we anticipated additional property opening except for maybe Resorts World opening in that timeframe. I will get some more detail from Applied Analysis on that recovery curve. I was going to, as we move through the presentation, the current recovery curve is estimated for some industries to be up to four years, others could be 12 to 18 months. And so we can provide more detail of the specifics on that recovery and get back to on an answer to that question on what is the forecast on those new properties opening.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, go ahead.
And again, Commissioner, that was also fluid as we received additional direction and plans from the Resort Association on how they plan to reopen.
Well, I think some of it's going to depend on, right, the phased-in approach, how do we uptick from where we were even in February, right? So some of, all of that is, and I think that's the longer four-year, three, three-to-four-year plan is to see how those numbers, which, you know, look, if it's 18 months, that's great, but we got to plan. I mean, I will just say that Jeremy was spot-on, which I had a hard time believing him when I was making cuts in the legislature when he said 2019. And so he was spot-on. So I'd be curious at some point to look at what they see as the recovery plan and when they see peaks that we might come back on.
Yes. Going to Slide 7, about 40, close to 40% of the general fund revenue historically in the last couple of years have been from consolidated tax revenue. This is to give you a history of that revenue source. In 2007, that was the previous peak, and you can see at the bottom of the recession in fiscal year 2010, that fell close to $100 million. And it took approximately six years to recover and get to, back to those peak amounts in 2016. And with that said, it's not unimaginable to consider a possible four-year recovery in this area. And as you move forward, we were seeing significant gains in consolidated tax revenue, really beginning in 2017, again, similar to our business license fees. And in fiscal year 2020, we would have forecasted consolidated tax revenue to exceed 2019, and we had originally estimated 2021, so that second to last column. Our conservative estimate for this revenue was $453 million, which was what the state had also, was consistent with the state's original estimates. As you can see, since COVID, as we respond to COVID-19, the 2020 estimate is expected to decline from $415 million in fiscal year 19 down to $371 million. And now looking forward, forward at fiscal year 2021, and looking at that recovery curve and, as well as industry-specific, how each of those industries are expected to recover, we're expecting the consolidated tax revenue to decline to $292 million. And you can see that's fairly close to that fiscal year, the bottom of the recession. Moving forward to Slide 8, we wanted to provide, in case, just for information, what the components of consolidated tax revenue. And I think it's important to note that a significant portion is based on sales tax, that is the supplemental city-county relief tax and the basic city-county relief tax. There are also smaller components, the governmental services tax, that's going to be the levy for the value of your, when you register your vehicle. We also have real property, a component that is real property transfer tax, as well as cigarette and liquor tax. The majority of our current estimates are based on sales tax. And that is because if you go to Slide 9, close to 86% of the consolidated tax revenue is based on taxable sales and sales tax revenue. There are no other questions, I'll move to Slide 10. Still, in regards to consolidated tax revenue, this chart, we wanted to demonstrate for you the cyclical nature of consolidated tax revenue. To start, the dark blue line represents monthly consolidated tax revenues in each month in fiscal year 2019. The light blue line is the same revenues for fiscal year 2020. And you can see that at the beginning of the fiscal year and through February, those revenues are exceeding fiscal year 19 as originally expected, and then beginning in March, they begin to decline fiscal, fall below fiscal year 2019. The orange line represents our estimates for fiscal year 2021 on a monthly basis. And keep in mind that fiscal year 2021 assumes an uninterrupted recovery, meaning there will not be another outbreak of COVID-19 or a different type of virus, and that we will not experience another closure of nonessential businesses. So it's a steady, it's a So it's a steady, it's a slow recovery, but it's a steady recovery. The other item that makes this challenging in kind of estimating and planning for this loss of revenue is just timing. If you look at the bottom left-hand corner, these are the months in which these revenues are earned. So for example, you can see in December, there's a peak in consolidated tax revenues because of the holiday season. However, the, again, to the bottom left-hand corner, these months represent the months in which the county collects these revenues. So for example, in that month of December, really high consolidated tax revenues. However, we're not going to collect those until February. So when we're looking at our, the pandemic and COVID-19, the issue, the challenge here is that March is when we first would have experienced a decrease in consolidated tax revenue for about two weeks of the month. However, we're not going to really see that, see that in collections until the end of May. And April is the first month that will really experience the significant impact in the loss of this revenue. But we won't truly know or realize that impact until the end of June. We move on to slide 11. This is to give you a picture of our forecast of the general fund cash balance. The general fund, what is helping us here is the general fund was sitting on a pretty strong cash position as of March and of 344 million. A lot of what is contributing to this is to keep in mind, we were planning to transfer $95 million from prior year budgetary savings to the capital fund to be allocated in the future. That transfer has been canceled and we are not making that transfer to the capital fund. And so that is helping us weather this storm through fiscal year 2020. So again, keep in mind those consolidated tax revenues in the previous slide and how we collect them versus when we earn them. So March and April, we're still experiencing pretty strong revenue collections in those months. In May is when we're going to first realize that first decrease in consolidated tax revenue. The other challenge that we have during this timeframe is we are not receiving any property tax collections until September. So there's always a little bit of a tightening of cash during this period. Obviously, that's exacerbated by the loss of consolidated tax revenue and business license fees. As we go through the months, you can see a decline. Through August and September, the cash balance remains fairly consistent. And that is because we receive a property tax installment during that month. And then by October, we are forecasting a critically low shortage on cash in the general fund. And this would equate to two to three days of general fund expenditures or less than a 1% fund balance. This projection assumes no change in general fund expenditures, meaning we're not making any adjustment to our planned, what we currently are contractually obligated to pay. If there are no questions, we'll go to slide 12. Wanted to identify for you the total loss of revenue as a result of COVID-19. The first line here is the FY 21 estimated revenues pre-COVID-19. This is what we had originally estimated for revenues for our original presentation to you. As a result of COVID-19 and the closure of those businesses, we are now estimating a revenue loss of 319 million, which will bring our fiscal year 21 estimated revenues post-COVID-19 at 1,255 million. The challenge we're experiencing is that our status quo expenditures, meaning those expenditures that we are contractually obligated to maintain, total 1,570 million. That is putting the county general fund in a structural imbalance of 315 million.
Are you going, excuse me, Madam Chair, you're going to define structural balance for us?
Yes, we are. Go good segue. Going to slide 13.
I should have turned ahead.
And I will just read through this because structural imbalance, that we are legally obligated to file a balanced budget. We could not file a budget where our expenditures exceeded our revenues. A structural imbalance, however, occurs when expected revenues are less than recurring expenditures needed to maintain current service levels. That means that we can resolve some of this problem with one-time resources such as fund balance. That can be used in the short term to reduce the amount of the structural imbalance. So that will help us balance this budget. But a sustained structural imbalance will eventually exhaust any one-time resources, meaning it is unsustainable. That fund balance for, in that example, is not going to be available next year. And so this will require a significant reduction in service delivery to the community. So it really, a structural imbalance represents we're starting behind or in the hole for next year. So we, as we are building this budget and resolving the budget shortfall, we need to keep in mind the future. And looking at slide 14, I think something important to consider, I just reported that the general fund budget is in a 315 minute, 315 million structural imbalance. This is a snapshot of the breakout of the general fund operating expenditures for fiscal year 19. So these are actual number, audited numbers. You can see that the total salaries and wages in the general fund total 335 million dollars. It is not possible to resolve the structural imbalance by cutting salaries and benefits. Over 50% of the general fund budget is directed towards public safety. And you can see a large component of our general fund budget is through contributions to Metro, the detention center, and UMC. And I think the message I hear is that at some point, absent of a timely and strong recovery, public safety services will be impacted by this pandemic. Moving on to slide 15. So the problem to solve is 315 million dollars. And as we were building the budget, we were able to identify areas to, to address this shortfall. Some of those where we reduced our town fund balances by 9.3 million. We also reduced the general fund balance. Keep in mind, we typically budget that at 10% of expenditures. We've now reduced that to 8.6%, bringing in an additional 69 million dollars. Again, want to remind you that these are nonrecurring resources. So they do resolve the imbalance of the budget. It is a, is basically a Band-Aid. It's something that we are going to need to address in fiscal year 22. Additional expenditure reductions that we were able to easily identify, we reduced services, supplies, and operating capital that we had originally budgeted by 17.9 million. Again, when we first built the fiscal year 21 budget, we were planning to budget 36 million to transfer to capital in fiscal year 21. We've eliminated that transfer. We've also reduced the detention center contribution by 6 million. You know that that fund is also in a structural imbalance. This will just require them to use additional fund balance to get through fiscal year 21. We've been working with Metro. They've reduced their contribution by 16.1 million. They believe there could be some more work there that they can do in fiscal year 21. We've reduced UMC's capital contribution. We typically have been budgeting a $31 million capital contribution. That's been reduced by 16 million for fiscal year 21. And then we've also eliminated the OPEB contribution. And we've reduced miscellaneous transfers to non-general funds where we thought they could get by one year without those transfers. And so the remaining adjustment required is 128.4 million dollar adjustment that's needed to balance the budget. I wanted to keep in mind, in your folders today, you have a a copy of the general fund pages that was filed with the Department of Taxation. These adjustments were made in that, in those pages. However, the 128 million in order to balance the budget, I had to, we were, we applied that 128 million across the board to all divisions and all functions of the general fund. So that is not representative of our recommendation, but it was an exercise needed to balance the budget.
Madam Chair.
Uh huh, Commissioner Jones.
Ms. Colvin, for the 128.4 million on this slide, is there the backup for this? Is it just a simple line item? I went through the 2021 budget, but it doesn't obviously link up with something else, our prior 2021 projected budget. So I guess what's the backup for these numbers on this slide?
As far as how I applied them in your, in the budget document or?
We reduced, for example, OPEB contribution by 13.1 million dollars. That was, I guess I'm not understanding what that would have been but for obviously our current financial situation.
Yes, these reductions, a little bit, it's a little bit difficult because what I'm showing your reduction in what we would have otherwise budgeted for FY 21. So it's hard, it is difficult to look from FY 20 budget to the FY 20 tentative that you have. But I would, for example, in reduced services and supplies, you may have seen in a tentative budget, increased expenditures in real property management or elections or various departments, that now there are reductions in those departments.
So these were roughly additions that we were going to do in 2021, but we are pulling them back essentially?
Correct. The same would be true for Metro. That, the county contribution that they provided to us originally has now been reduced since that original estimate. And UMC is another good example where traditionally you would see a $31 million contribution. Your page, the general fund pages now report a $15 million contribution.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. What, would you describe for the public the OPEB contribution, what that is? And then what is available to cover the reduction that we're saving there?
So the OPEB contribution is in regards to, it stands for other post-employment benefit contributions. And this relates to health insurance subsidies for retirees. I wanted to just clarify that the county does not pay for retiree health insurance. However, the cost, the premiums that retirees pay is far less than the cost of the medical claims that they experience. And so there's an implicit subsidy. We have an actuarial, we are required by governmental accounting standards to have an actuarial estimate of this liability, which exceeds, it's close to 500 million dollars countywide. And so we have as a county, since 2009, when this accounting standard was implemented, the county has been contributing towards that liability, which is far less. And I apologize, I don't have that number in front of me. But what has been contributed towards that liability is far less than the long-term liability that we have. What we are proposing and recommending here is the elimination of that contribution for fiscal year 21.
So Jessica, could I just follow up with that? Because last year was the year that we had to start changing our accounting standards, right? When this all came about. But that doesn't mean that for the future, that we can't make that component up towards our liability if we get in a better spot. Because at some point, we do have to try and capture that overall liability. But this is just foregoing it for the future today so that we can use it for other dollars, right?
Correct. This would be what would be a one-time expenditure savings. But yes, we would look at FY 22 and see if it would be possible to make, to continue that contribution.
And that's something consistently that across the state and local government, I think they're having to do because each year you tried to chip away at your liability based on the accounting standards. And this, so this is, this is probably a normal, a normal transaction that most people are looking at.
Yes.
Madam Chair, if I could just follow up. But specifically, these numbers were numbers that you as staff went through and picked out and said, this is what we would, we proposed to reduce. So for example, the reduction from 10% to 8.6%, that was your, your recommendation. It's not like in law or anything else, right?
Correct. I think we need to maintain a 4% fund balance before Department of Taxation could declare a severe fiscal emergency. 8.3% represents a one month of fund balance.
But so how did you decide to go from 10 to 8.6?
If you, if we go to the next slide, our final recommendation would be to go to 8.3%, which would be a one month of fund balance. Because keep in mind, fund balance is not cash. As we've identified in consolidated tax revenue, there's a two-month lag. So we need to be careful, we need to keep some amount of fund balance just for cash flow purposes.
But again, just why, so you decided you wanted to keep one month, that's why you went to 8.3?
Yes, one month was what I felt most comfortable with going, is low to go to. Moving to our recommendations. So typically, our recommendations in a budget, in our most recent budget presentations has been recommendations on additional supplemental positions or capital allocations. This year, these recommendations primarily relate to additional resources and cost containment measures to reduce this budget imbalance. And we're starting with, again, the remaining balance of 128 million. Again, this is what I had, what we had spread across all functions in order to balance the budget. However, we've identified other options than that methodology. The first are additional resources, again, all nonrecurring. But the reduction in discretionary capital fund balance. So Fund 437 does have available fund balance that we feel comfortable we could bring over 25 million, which is about half of that available fund balance. We also, as to your point, Commissioner Sager Bloom, you know, bringing that general fund balance down to one month of expenditures. So that would be down to 8.3%. That would generate another $3 million. And we've identified some additional transfers or discretionary funds and non-general funds that have accumulated and bringing in transferring over $6 million. We've also taken a look at capital projects. And we've identified a number of capital projects that will be closing or have closed and have residual balances and would feel comfortable recommending 12 million dollars. So this of bringing those funds over is additional resources, again, nonrecurring resources. And keep in mind, at the same time, although these are nonrecurring resources, you know, senior staff with, with your help and our governmental affairs team, we're still working on other possible funding sources to help bridge this shortfall. And that brings us down some to, brings us down to some recommended cost containment measures. Looking at the budget, we have kept departments very tight on their service and supply budget since the recession. We have not increased those significantly year over year. But with that, we've identified approximately 8 million in addition to the 17.9 that we've already reduced them by, that we think we can go a little bit further on the services supply line item. We've also looked at our vacant positions. We've been working closely with our departments and helping us identify what are the critical positions that we must hire? And what, which could we freeze for fiscal year 21? In that exercise, we've identified approximately 14 million dollars in positions that are budgeted, but that we could freeze and would generate savings. We're also working on a voluntary separation program as well as a voluntary furlough program, similar to programs that we had in the prior recession. These are savings, very rough estimates of 2 million dollars total. As we work through that, we'll have better estimates. But that was based on prior experience from the previous recession. And with pretty much almost every tool we have that we could think of to put against this 315 million dollar structural imbalance, we are, we still are remaining short by 58.4 million dollars. And what we've left that is, we will need to be looking at the salaries and benefits line items within the general fund. And that would be through executive management and employee concessions. And again, looking for as, as much in concessions as possible to limit any reductions in the workforce. And all of that is to balance the budget. Again, knowing we'll still be in a structural imbalance.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Colvin. And again, sort of my question from the last slide, in terms of backup on this, these are recommendations, do you have more detail on the recommendations as to, obviously, the 8 million in additional reduction in services and supplies, and in particular, obviously, 58.4 million in executive management employee concessions?
So the 8 million in services and supplies, what we, the exercise that we went through is we went to look at the FY '20 budget compared to what we were estimating departments to spend in those line items and see if there was some space, capacity there where they weren't spending all of their budget. And that's how we identified the additional 8 million dollars. The 58.4 is really just what is left. There's really, we could have not been able to identify to this point any other option unless we find some additional resources to reduce that $58 million. So the 58 million at this point, we're seeing as concessions in that salary and benefit line item.
Can you give us some sort of a context, both in comparison to the cuts that were made in the '09, 2010 period, and also sort of where, what does that look like for our current workforce that's general fund-funded, FTEs or other things? I mean, I, it, it sounds like a big number. It is a big number. I'm just trying to have some, understand some, some context to the number.
To give some parameters, and Ms. King could probably talk about the previous recession, but the 58.4 million represents approximately 11% of salaries and benefits in the general fund. On average, if you looked at the cost of salaries and benefits for an employee, about 100,000, that's all benefits, including PERS. And so you could do that math, that that would be approx, over 580 positions if you were not to, again, that is if there were no concessions. The goal is to have as much in concessions as possible before looking to an elimination of positions.
So in sort of a very simplistic binary function, you would either eliminate 11% of the workforce or 11, reduce their, their salary and benefits by 11%? It was truly binary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. I don't, Ms. King, some context from 20, 2009, 2010?
So Commissioners, some of the concessions that were made by all employees included, some of our bargaining units took a 40-hour furlough of hours. I believe for the most part, all of our employees, you know, took a 2%, might have been a little bit more in other units, salary reduction. We had the voluntary furlough program, also employee separation program that also allowed us to allow employees to retire, and the intent would be to, if we were to hire back those positions, that the cost would be at a much lower amount. There was also, do we add employee reductions, salary reductions? And then obviously, the layoffs were the last resort. I can't think of, I know I'm missing something. I can't think of what the other sessions were.
I feel like you guys had car allowances, or you had some different things that you guys gave up, that the employees gave up as well, maybe some.
I just wanted to add merit freezes.
Merit freezes?
Merit freezes, as well as increases to longevity increases. Yep. Commissioner Weekly's got it over there.
What, what, what percentage of sort of these contemplated cuts would be for folks who are currently subject to collective bargaining agreements? I mean, it, it has executive management and also employees. So is there some idea for what percentage are going to come from folks who are currently subject to CBAs?
I would say probably, probably at least 90% because you have a level of non-union employees, and I believe last I checked, it was probably around 700 or 800 of those employees. And for management, there's probably about maybe 175, maybe a little bit more of management employees. So for the most part, it would come from employee concessions for collective bargaining units.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Sagerbloom?
So this includes UMC but not the airport?
This does not include UMC. The general fund budget only reflects our, the general fund's contribution to UMC. So they will be, they file a budget in their enterprise fund.
Okay. And district attorney, public defender, courts?
They are in the general fund.
So this, this would include them?
Yes. Going to Slide 2021, I know I probably haven't spoken of the structural imbalance enough, but to summarize, based on our recommendations, the budget has been filed and it is balanced. And with some of the adjustments that we already made and are recommending, you can see that we have non-recurring, a non-recurring fund balance contribution of 69 million. This will not be available in FY '22. And this is where we're looking forward now, beyond FY '21, what are we going to be faced with in FY '22? We also have less non-recurring transfers in from those town funds of 9.3 million. Included in our, that first slide was some expenditure savings that we don't anticipate having those again of 28 million. And in my last recommendations, we had a total of $46 million in non-recurring resource contributions. Those are funds coming in from the capital funds that would be one-time resources. And so with the recommendations, we are expecting or recommending to file the general fund budget in a general fund, in a structural imbalance of 152 million. And what that means is that, and if FY '22 general fund revenues do not increase over FY '21 budgeted revenues, then we are going to need to reduce expenditures further in FY '22 by at least 152 million dollars. And that does not contemplate any contractual increases that we have in our expenditures in FY '22. I think this, it's important to note here that one thing, one thing that has really helped us in kind of, as we said, we had a strong cash balance in March of 2020 that is giving us a little bit of breathing room for a couple of months to make these decisions. This organization is very large. It's hard, it's difficult to make changes quickly. And as we are addressing this 152 million structural imbalance, it will not be in March or April of next year. We will be likely giving you monthly updates on actual revenues and actual expenditures. And I would imagine we would be making recommendations to you as early as December and January in order for any type of savings to be realized by July 1 of next year. Going on to Slide 20, just future challenges. It's very important, and we have been making anyone who listen aware of this challenge, we have approximately 1,100 officers funded through a sales tax. In this case, we have 795 through, 795 officers through a more cops sales tax. This fund has been in a structural imbalance, but again, that's been exaggerated, and fund balance will be diluted in fiscal year '22, based on our current estimates in revenue. And going to Slide 2, the other sales tax that is currently funding 311 officers is also expected to decline. You can see that in fiscal year 2021, that fund balance will only equate to 1.8 million, requiring a significant reduction in officers through this funding source. And we have been sending that message out to our congressional delegation. Again, these are officers funded outside of the general fund. It gets approximately 2,100 officers that are funded through, through the count, through 2080, through the Metro's general fund. However, these are outside of that. And the idea, I think the expectation is that once these funds run out, that Metro will be looking to the county and city to help fund these officers out of our general funds. So a future challenge ahead. And a summary on Slide 22 of additional challenges that we expect to face. And again, the general fund is structurally imbalanced, and that means that to maintain the county's current level of services to, provided to the community, community in FY '22, it's going to require additional resources, so a strong recovery, additional one-time resources, or a reduction in that service level. Now also looking forward at our one stable revenue source that we have, which are property tax payments, and poor economic conditions may result in an increase in late property tax payments. So we're keeping an eye on that. We will give you a report in September at our next installment to see how much of that we realize. Again, a slow economic recovery may also result in a decline in assessed values, as well as increased requests for a reduction in assessed values through the Board of Equalization. We have been in contact with our county assessor, Brianna Johnson, to discuss this process, and she is getting requests, especially from our commercial property owners, requesting a reduction in their assessed value due to their loss of revenue that they have experienced and expect to experience. And so realizing that there will likely be a reduction in assessed values, property tax revenue may decline. And at this point, with the abatement, abatements in place, there is no limit to which property tax levies can do. And by that, I mean, as you, as all of you are aware, in the, at the bottom of the recession, property tax revenues declined significantly. And unfortunately, although those assessed values increased tremendously and have been recovering, property tax revenues are limited to how much they can increase each year. For residential, it's 3%, and for commercial, no more than 8%. But even that was significantly reduced in those recovery years.
Okay. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Colvin, can you, do you have a sense for, but for the property tax caps that were put in place years ago, where we would be financially?
Justin, that's an open question. You and I have been trying to fix property tax forever.
Let's just say better, right?
It would be much better. There is, I don't have the exact, I do have the number, I don't have it with me, I apologize for that. But there is a significant, about over 90% of our properties are in abatement, and so that's revenue left on the table.
Okay. And then just generally with regards to the last bullet point, so two questions. I know we've got, obviously, the Raider Stadium, and I want to say thank you to those of you who were very involved in making sure that there was a very substantial, I don't know, fund for, for these types of unexpected situations. I guess what is the worst-case scenario if Raider Stadium and other GO bonds go south? And what's the trigger in terms of this property tax issue? Was it an automatic trigger, or how does that work?
I think that that's, this is this last bullet where we're trying to, 2.8 billion dollars of our general obligation debt is additionally pledged with these revenues that we're experiencing a significant decline, consolidated tax, room tax, sales tax, even hospital and airport revenues. We have a very small GO portfolio for airport, but nonetheless, we have some out there, some bonds out there. What the GO pledge means is that in the event those additionally pledged revenues are insufficient to pay the debt service, then the county general fund is required to pay the debt service. And if the county general fund is unable to pay that debt service, a property tax levy is required. And we are limited by that cap of $3.64. We, Ms. King and I were recently just on a call with our bond counsel to get an idea of what that process would entail. One thing, this is the worst-case scenario, so in the event we were unable to pay any of the debt service, that equates to a 21-cent property tax increase, which is very close to the cap based on our overlapping tax rates. And we will, now keep in mind, it's not just the stadium authority bonds, but we are, we also have a GO on all of our regional flood control district bonds, which are pledged with sales tax, as well as a large portion of the LVCVA portfolio. They do have their own revenue bonds, but there is a good portion of theirs that's also GO-backed. And then our own transportation bonds that are backed with a room tax. So we are carefully watching those. We're also doing a cash flow analysis based on the room tax projections, because this is also a timing issue. In the event a property tax increase were to be required in the future, we would need to time that so that it can get on the tax roll in time to meet the cash demands, rather than falling to the general fund. But this is, Commissioner, the worst-case scenario that we've identified so far.
Thank you.
Jessica, before I go to everybody else, I just want to say thank you because I've watched over the last four weeks, you and your staff worked tirelessly to try and figure out different ways, the least impactful ways. And I know it's not been easy, and it's been super stressful, and nobody wants to be cutting a budget, right? Everybody wants to be adding to a budget. So kudos to you, your leadership and your staff, to try and give us the least impactful hits to, one, ensuring that we can still have social services, because as I said before, it's going to be a huge need within our community, but figuring out every nickel and dime that we could spend to try and offset some of it. So for some, going back to where you had 1 million dollars, 1 million dollars is a lot when you're trying to, to find that. $500,000 is a lot. I remember in the legislature in 2009, looking for $60, right? To try and balance that budget. So kudos to you and your staff and for doing the hard work and giving us some recommendations to, to where we have to go. And I, in particular, understand this is going to be fluid. Each day is new property, as properties come on as a whole, as we go through this, that we're, we as a board are going to have to be flexible to work with you to ensure that we can continue to be a board, quite frankly. Anybody else have any comments or questions? I have one for Mr. Hogan. It's so nice to see a new face because we get accustomed to each other in this building. So talk to me about how many officers, worst-case scenario, if this were to the 1,100 officers up for discussion, what does that take us back to? Or does it take us back to 1.2 officers? Because right now, we're at 2.0.
So, thank you, Commissioner, for the record, Rich Hogan, Chief Financial Officer, Las Vegas Metro Police Department. So you can see through the slide that Ms. Colvin has presented, our structural deficit in the More Cops and Crime Prevention Act, assuming that the same contribution still exists in the operating fund continues going forward, which is obviously a very open-ended question, given the downturn revenues. Our fund balance, if the projections hold true, is, is somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 to 54 million dollars by the time we get to fiscal year, well, it exists now, actually. So by the time we get to fiscal year '23, '22, without any changes, that, that those fund balances, respecting those respective funds will be depleted, necessitating, again, all things being equal, reduction in approximately 126 positions. And the following fiscal year, a reduction of somewhere around 450 positions. If our, with no changes to our, with no changes to our population, that would, of course, of course, is not going to be the case under our current population numbers, that's a reduction to about 1.7, which is as low as we have been, even during the downturn.
And for me, and it pains me to even be having this discussion because we worked so hard to get all of the officers in place, and it took us forever to recreate and all of that. So I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping by some miracle, we figure out a stable revenue source for us as a whole, as a county, which Commissioner Jones and I agree, property tax is that. But I want to, I just, I don't want to have to go backwards. We've made huge strides on violent crime and everything else, so.
Yeah.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Gibson?
Thank you. And Mr. Hogan, we appreciate.
And Mr. Hogan, we appreciate very much the direction that the sheriff has given and the efforts that you and your staff have undertaken to provide some relief. This is extremely difficult, and I respect. One of the questions that people have asked me, in fact, I just got a text asking me this question. There has been a lot of discussion, I'm not, I'm not directing this to you, Rich, so you can have a seat. But thank you. One of the questions that's being asked is, what kind of relief is there up to date, to date? What kind of relief has come from the federal government in any of the programs that we've seen? And I've understood that there are cost associate, COVID costs covered partially by some of what has happened from the federal government, but there are no lost revenue recovery elements. So we're not allowed to cover these losses we've been talking about in revenues as we project them going forward. Am I right about that?
Yes, Commissioner, that's correct. There are funds available through the CARES Act, and we have our governmental affairs team, as I know all of you are working on trying to see if there can be a technical correction or change or future funding to shore up lost revenues for local governments. But at this point, no. The funds available are not, not available.
So, and Commissioner Naft, you did such a great job with our congressional delegation. I think that, in all fairness, we need to, we need the public to hear that from our congressional delegation, because there is mixed rumors with some of our entities on what you can and can't do with it. And I, and it's unfortunate. And at the MAC, I said, stop, stop saying that, because our direction has been from our congressional delegation, it is not allowable use. That is what NACO has heard across the country. So I just, I feel like we got to hear it from them. Commissioner Gibson, I know you and Commissioner Naft were working with our congressional delegation yesterday, but Mary Ann, you're an amazing attorney, but there are a few attorneys out there that seem to be trying to read through this, and I think you're on the same page as our congressional delegation. So not that I don't trust you, because I think you're awesome, but either that or someone needs to, and I'm just going to say, tell Las Vegas to sit down and stop talking like that, because they're giving mixed messages. So, sorry. I was trying not to say, make it personal, but now I'm kind of angry about it.
Can I confirm, Ms. Miller, are you an epidemiologist? Okay, I thought so. Apparently, some other city attorneys think they're also epidemiologists.
That's the difference. She's a county attorney.
See what you started, Commissioner Gibson. I was so trying to keep it together.
Well, so I think it's important, though, for the public to understand that up to this point, yes, there's been a whole lot of money. Billions and billions of dollars have been allocated out to states and counties for various things. But none of that money to date, as we understand the limitations, has been allocated so that we might replace lost revenues occasioned by this downturn. And we, in our discussion yesterday, and Commissioner Naft can clarify if I got it wrong, but I understood that they're yet working on another piece of legislation, and it, there is some hope maybe. But I think at this point, we have no options but to plan on nothing that would replace this revenue, and then we can hope for everything. I defer to you, Commissioner Naft.
Sure. And I, to the chair's point, I think there are some entities throwing spaghetti at the wall. I think the way we're doing it is more prudent and responsible, particularly Commissioner Gibson is 100% correct. Thus far, the legislation that has been approved by the House and the Senate, signed by the President, does not allow for any expenditures other than immediately COVID-related. So we're extremely limited. It's not covering the loss of revenue, which is our real serious impediment that we're dealing with right now and through the report that we just heard from Jessica. What we did hear from our, from most of the members of the delegation, I know they're all fighting for this, but was in subsequent, not the legislation that's going to be passed next, today, tomorrow, but hopefully in the next subsequent package, that's, that they'll address that portion of it and essentially hopefully lift those restrictions on those monies, so that they can be spent on cost overruns and expenditures that were budgeted and loss of revenue related. And I do think that's a good point. We can certainly invite them to address Clark County residents through this body.
Well, I just think if we had them call in or something, just to kind of reiterate what we've been seeing, because I just, I'm not trying to, look, no one likes cutting anything. So if other people are saying they don't have to cut, that's amazing to me, right? So I just think our congressional delegation could help clarify that.
Just one more comment, Madam Chair. The, I think it was real clear from the conversations we had with all of our federal delegation representing Clark County, that they are, they understand what our issues are. They can speak very, very factually about where we are and what is going on. They're very much engaged, and they have pledged to do everything they can possibly do, and we believe them. It was a very good conversation, very, very straightforward. I mean, there were no, no one pulled any punches, but we understand that they understand what our challenges are, and if there's a way they can do anything, we have every reason and should have every reason to be confident they'll do it.
Commissioner Sagerblum.
Just to be a little bit contrarian, I do think that we should push the envelope as much as we can every day, look at some of the expenditures that we're cutting back and see if there's a way we could divert those and make them COVID-eligible. Also, just interpretations, every lawyer's got a different interpretation, and even though we have some on this opinion, and we have a great attorney from the District Attorney's Office, I just would not give up on taking that $300 million and using at least some of it for this $118 million shortfall.
And I just am going to point out what the language says, and I'm just going to, I'm pretty passionate about this, because I spent my entire weekend as a member of the Board of Directors for NACO with Mr. Chase on the phone with our congressional delegation as they were working through the Secretary of Treasury. But what it says, and I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Sagerblum, but I don't, I'm not trying to fly in the face of the federal government and lose further grants later down the road and have to pay back stuff that we're not doing. But the legislation is very clear that it says that it can't be used for anything that's when, within your budget, that was previously budgeted, right? Which is where the sticking point comes. But it doesn't mean that we can't look at repurposing folks, and we, but I just think the message has to be that it is not to be used for current lost revenue. So, and I want, I want our congressional delegation to say that, because I'm all about looking at different ways to repurpose employees, because we're going to need social service, we're going to need all these other things. But, you know, we all got to be on the same page in this valley, because at the end of the day, nobody really cares where the lines are when it comes to social service. And I surely, when I was making some decisions to get food out to people, I didn't look at lines on, and I didn't check zip codes. I just made sure we had food banks. So that's my point. Okay, I know it's time for us to wrap up, right?
Commissioner, if I may, I just wanted to, one, a challenge that we did bring up yesterday to our federal delegation, in line with Commissioner Gibson's comment on the use of the CARES Act funds, is that the, there's several different funding sources within CARES Act, as well as through FEMA. Many of them require a match requirement of 25%. And we brought to their attention that typically you have to use county revenues or local revenues to make that match requirement, and with our budget shortfall, those funds are not available. And so we did request consideration to either waive or allow other federal funds to be used to meet the match.
That's a very important point, Madam Chair. In fact, we, there is a sizable contribution we make to the state to cover matches of federal funds that are allocated, and there is some relief there to be had if they would accommodate that request.
Commissioner Weekly.
Thank you. What I've learned from this board here, that we have, we have a group of individuals that's not afraid to speak up on things that's important and things that are very relevant. And, you know, I, I listened to you, Madam Chair, and I understand that you really want to get all of us, all the local municipalities, all on the same page. But unfortunately, that's not happening at this point. Everybody has their own, we all have our own priorities in terms of how we think we need to get back there. In our briefing on yesterday, Mrs. Colvin, she, she gave us a window of what happened when we dealt with the crash in 2008, and how we had to scale back, and how we had to do so much more with less. It was a horrific time then. We thought, oh my God, how are we going to get through this? And if I tell you that the men and women that work for Clark County, they did their very best. They rolled up their sleeves. It was a sad day. I sat in that lobby on a many a days, watching people walk out with their boxes who lost their jobs. And that was a very horrible, sad time in this building. It really was. But I'm so optimistic, I just really and truly believe that we're going to get through this. We just have to really be creative. And I love the fact that whether it's Naft and Gibson or whomever, all the commissioners here are talking to our federal officials, who I believe they really do have their boots on the ground. These folks are, I mean, all of them, from the senators to the Congress folks, they're doing webinars, they're doing Zoom meetings, they're, they're communicating. I think we have one of the best communication tools going on in this entire state. I don't know anybody in the country that's working as hard as we are here. But the point is, I think what you're doing, Madam Chair, you're now establishing weekly press conferences. The public just wants us to talk to them and tell them what's going on. They'd rather have it straight with no chaser. They don't want the nonsense and the BS and people playing games with them. Tell them what's going on. Folks who are struggling to make ends meet, they just want to know, tell me what's going on so that I could kind of set myself up to be prepared for whatever is next. So us sitting around, MK, waiting for somebody else to do it for us, I love the idea to have, whether it be Senators Rosen and Cortez Mastos, or Congresswoman Deana Titus, or whomever, to call in and talk to us and share with us what's going on on the Hill. I think that would be fantastic. But let's take what our county managers and our CFO have said to us, and let's just be real with the people. I'm getting text messages from folks saying, this is really sad, as I sit here and watch this. But they're looking at us for hope. And hell, if we throw in the towel, what do we expect from them? So let's just dig deep, and let's just figure out, how can we be creative when, as we gradually open this thing back up, we just have to do a thing, do things a bit different. We, over the years, have tightened up on a lot of things. We've, we've heard that county can be really tough on whether you're trying to get a business license or business inspection or something. Now, we got to be a little bit more flexible on how we do business. We got to be more creative on how we get folks coming through the doors. I mean, I saw this guy on, on the news, I think it was this morning or last night, saying how people are not going to go step one foot back into these hotels. I don't believe that. I think the hotels are, while, while we're all asleep, they're in meetings. They're coming up with some creative ways. I'm meeting with people from R and R. I'm like, okay, y'all, give me the inside scoop. What's going to be the big plan? What's the big promotions that's coming out? I just believe some big things are going to happen for us. And so, you guys, let's not turn this meeting into a sad day. Let's just be realistic. I know county manager, you would have never dreamed that this would fall on your watch. I know myself and, you know, Commissioner Larry Brown, you know, this is not the way we wanted our final bow, you know, our final destination to be, but hey, we've been here before. Tough times never last, but tough people do. And I just believe we can get through this thing. But we're going to have to be creative, Madam Chair, and you're one who never sleeps.
I know, and I'm encouraging everybody to be.
I was waiting on your phone call back six hours yesterday, but you were still on the road at 9:00 when you called me back. But that, that's just how it goes. So let's, let's, let's try to bring some hope to these folks. Let's be realistic and not lie to them. Let's tell them what we're dealing with, and then let's just figure out, how can we be creative to bring some hope to Clark County?
Nope, I think we can. Commissioner Brown, did you want to add anything, or?
Nope. Not at this time.
Great.
He always has the best speeches. Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
He does. Jessica, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Mary, it's just informational, do we have to accept the report?
I think we have received it.
We've received it?
Received.
Perfect. Okay. Next, next item. I think we have a couple left.
Commissioners, we have item number 60.